To order the 2012 Committee, City of Rapid City, South Dakota Agenda, Monday, April 13th, 2009, 5:30 meeting. If we could have roll call and determination of quorum, please.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson? Kroger? Costello?
Here.
Hattcock?
Here.
LaCroy?
Here.
Martinson?
Here.
Weifenbach?
Here.
Ocrebkey?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Amber. Tonight, we're having discussion on 2012 soccer discussion. And I will have, if we could, Malcolm Chapman has been with the task force for soccer, and I'd like to turn the floor over to him, so he can do a little bit of discussion on the things that he has come forward with his committee. Thank you.
Malcolm?
Thank you, Madam President. The council, back in October, asked the mayor to form a task force to help soccer Rapid City. And at that time, the task force was formed with Karen Bowman, Frank Bettman, Booker Beaumont, Dan Davis, Rod Johnson, Renee Kemper, Joan Martin, Bill Ocrebkey, Brian Pitts, Dale Teck, Ron Weifenbach, and then we later added Jerry Cole to that. Since that time, the soccer task force has had ten meetings, and at that first meeting decided that they needed to come up with a scope of work for the task force. And that scope included discussions about the land, fundraising efforts, 2012 funds, infrastructure needs, a review of the soccer financials, an overall assessment of the project, and, I might have mentioned already, 2012 funding, but 2012 funding as well. Since that time, the soccer task force has come to the city and asked the city to approve the recommendations for land, and the city council did that, based on the soccer task force's recommendation of the North Elk Vale land. And then, the soccer task force has continued to meet, and now is asking that the city council have meaningful discussion around what does the 2012 program that we approved in 2004, 2005, what specifically does that mean for the soccer community? I think what's at question really is, there's $3.8 million, about $300,000 which was supposed to go toward the soccer complex in 2008, and another three and a half million dollars that to do, that they're eligible for this year. The soccer task force has a question really, for the council to discuss and make a decision about, is, does that mean $3.8 million plus the land as it is, regardless of where that land is, and we've approved Elk Vale? Or does that include infrastructure-ready land? I've heard different things from individual council members, and the soccer task force is now ready to move ahead with putting together their marketing plan, and going back out to figure out how to phase in the different 25 contiguous soccer fields. So, just some clarification for the soccer community, as it relates to what does the, what did the 2012 committee and the city council mean in 2004, 2005, when they said $3.8 million in land? So, that's the crux of what the soccer community is asking right now.
So, Malcolm, you want the discussion to be around what do you mean by the 3.8? Do we want to include infrastructure? Do we want to discuss that we gave them the land, and then the 3.8 was all we were giving them? You want the, basically, this committee tonight, the 2012 committee, to decide where they really were going with the 3.8 and what? I guess...
Madam President, if I could just add, I just think it's a little confusing for the soccer community to go out, and they're not really sure what they're fundraising, in total, what they're fundraising for.
Okay.
And by no means am I trying to be argumentative tonight, but I think the council just needs to get clear on what it, whatever that means. I think the soccer task force will go and run with whatever that means. They just need some clarity in terms of what does it mean for them, as they start to put together their plans, and their marketing pieces, and building relationships with those in the community are going to help.
Did you have speakers that wanted to speak to us first, before we had the discussion?
I think they're, and I can't speak for them, but I think that they're here to answer any questions, as it relates to any of the things that we've talked about in the task force meetings, but more specifically, the question that I put on the floor. But, I mean, they're ready to answer any questions, or talk about any aspect of soccer in 2012.
I have one. It's just that you talked about you had ten meetings. I guess maybe an update on those ten meetings, where you were going, might help for the council. You asked about fundraising, infrastructure, financials, and 2012 funding. Tonight, you're talking about 2012 funding. What do you meant by financials, infrastructure, and fundraising, and what those ten meetings were based around?
Well, we've covered a lot of that throughout those ten meetings. The brunt of them were taking up with the discussion about land, and looking at the criteria that was created through Public Works for the land discussion. That took up probably half of the meetings. And then, at the other meetings, we talked about fundraising efforts, we talked about marketing, we've tried to talk about the overall scope of the plan, but we keep coming back to, so where's the city council? You know, if they go out and start fundraising today, for Phase One of it, is the city council, and I'm not sure how many have read the original 2012 application, but in that 2012 application, two things really struck me. One, they were talking about, at that time in 2004, the possibility of coming to the city and asking for a TIF. And they were also talking about phasing in the different, the 25 fields. So, we've had discussion around all of those items, and we keep coming back to, so what does the city really mean when they say 3.8 and land? So, that's where we keep coming back to.
Thank you, Malcolm Chapman. Do we have any discussion from council members that would like to ask, on any of the requests that Malcolm is talking about tonight? Bill Ocrebkey, please.
Thank you. You know, I remember starting off, right from the beginning, with the soccer groups, and it was very, very clear to me that it was three and a half million dollars plus land. We didn't talk about whether it was going to be ready land or not, but it was land. And it was kind of up to us, as the city council, as the city staff, as the city organization, to find that piece of land that would be large enough, and convenient enough, to put the 25 or 26 soccer fields on. That was, that was the charge that I took, and I joined up with, three and a half years ago. And so, to me, it was, it's very clear that they get three and a half million dollars, plus the 80 acres of land. What they do with that, how they can use that money, I would have thought that they would have, we would have followed the same process, as any other groups that come forward wanting 2012 monies. And there's plenty of precedence for it. We gave money to the DOL, we gave money to ADA, we gave money to, to the Performing Arts, to come back to consult, or hire a consultant, or a planner, or designer, or whatever you want to call them, to come up with a plan, and say, this is what it's going to actually look like, and this is what it's going to cost. I'm not sure we authorized that kind of money, that 50, 60, 70,000 dollars it's going to take. I suspect that some designer or engineer can put together and put exactly what they're going to need. So, it seems to me that, it would seem to me that we would want to authorize the money for them to do this design work, so that they know exactly where they're going. To me, it's a no-brainer. They got, we authorized, we approved, four years ago, the 2012 money, to give the soccer complex, or the soccer group, three and a half, 3.8 million dollars to build this complex. We realized it four years ago, how important it was for our community, in both economic development and economic impact, let alone the needs that we have for our young people, and people in our citizens in Rapid City, that enjoy the soccer. Plus, what other benefits is going to come. So, it seemed to me that we, as a council, should reinforce our thoughts, as stated before even, that they have three and a half million dollars to build this complex. Now, what's that going to look like? How much is it going to cost? They still need to go out, and they still need to go out and figure out exactly what it's going to look like, and exactly what it's going to cost. I would hope that they would come up, come back with us, and say, we need 70,000 dollars to hire a consultant to design this, and so we know where the costs are, and what we're going to need. Otherwise, we're still guessing. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Bill. Jason, just a question. Are we supposed to, can they put a motion on the floor tonight, if they decide that what they're going to do with this, or, because it does say soccer on the schedule, can there be, a motion be made to do with the discussion? Jason Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The item on your agenda is the soccer discussion tonight. And this is a meeting of the 2012 committee, which is a recommending body to the council. So, yes, you could make a motion, which would be in the form of a recommendation, that will be forwarded to the council, and the council will ultimately act on that recommendation.
Thank you, Jason. Any other discussion, council? Sam Quaker?
Do we have an update from the soccer organization on fundraising efforts?
Sure. Your spokesman is Brian Pitts, on fundraising, if we could. Brian?
Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Malcolm. He's done a great job of leading the task force, and we've worked hard to get it to where it is, right now. I also want to thank the council for accepting the land, before we get too far into this conversation. In terms of where we are in fundraising, Malcolm has a copy. We only made a couple of copies of the initial draft of a formal presentation, and we've taken that, we've taken some feedback from the task force, we've taken some feedback from some business leaders that are, in our soccer community, on what they would rather see that look like. And so, that's actually now going back to print, so we can print more of those, so then we can begin to go out. We've talked with one bank, and they said that they would help us. They didn't commit any monetary amount, but they did say that they would be able to help us, over a three-year period. And that's, that's the only people we've talked to. And we started talking to people, and setting up meetings, and the question that we got was, well, where was it going to be? You know, where is it going to be? Because people don't want to just throw money at a fathom, at a, at an idea. They want something concrete, to put their money towards, and they want to see some value for that. And that's really been the hang-up. So, now that we are at that point, we're moving forward. Some of the things that we're working on now, we're working with forefront design, and they're doing some flood elevation studies for us, because we had, Pat Wiss gave about 60,000 dollars of his efforts, to come up with the master plan. And that's what you see in your brochure, there in the tri-fold. But that plan doesn't consider where you can put buildings on that particular 80-acre parcel. And so, what we need to do is, we need to do some flood elevations, and figure out where the most logical place to put a building or a structure would be. And so, that's where we are now, and that will change that conceptual design a little bit. And we want to kind of get all those ducks in a row, before we go out there and hit. The other thing that we've been cautious and cognitive about, is the economic situation that we all face. And the, though, the time spent in the task force has actually been beneficial, and it's allowed our economy, maybe, to come back around to where people are maybe more willing to get involved in this. So, we're actively pursuing that. We're starting with the media campaign. We've got all of our stuff put together, we're just waiting for the right time to roll that out. And there's some events that are going on in our country. I know you probably don't follow the game as closely as I do, but our world, our men's national team plays eight times, in June and July. And so, there's going to be a lot of soccer coverage, there's going to be a lot of things going on. And so, we're, we're looking at the timing of when we can roll that out, and get the fundraising going. Has there been money raised? Yeah, there's been donations of 15,000 dollars, there's been donation of professional services, but we haven't actively begun that fundraising process, because we've had lots of questions that we felt we needed to have in place, and answers for, before we really hit the business community, and national organizations, for support.
Thank you. Sam, do you have a follow-up?
I do. So, Brian, what is your request to the committee tonight?
I don't know that we have any formal request. I think Malcolm stated our request, rather clearly. There's 3.8 million dollars, we're well aware of that. There's land. The question is, there's infrastructure costs that are going to go to that land, and we're asking the city, if there's, if that money is intended to be used for the infrastructure, because some of, some of us feel that that was intended to be used in the boundaries of the complex, and we're just looking for some direction for you. We'll take whatever you say, and we'll go with that, but that's going to tell us our ultimate fundraising goal, as Malcolm alluded to. So, that's really what we're trying to seek out, is the expectations of us, so we know what our ultimate target is, and then we'll go for it.
So, I guess I'm trying to understand what your desire is, so we can have a baseline for the discussion tonight. Has that been, you laid that out, and what your, what your organization's request specifically is?
Well, I don't, I don't think that we have a specific request. I think what we want to know, is where you see the 3.8 million dollars. Do you see that being used for the infrastructure, from where it currently is, out to that location? Or do you see the 3.8 million dollars being used inside the boundaries, to develop soccer fields? And put in the infrastructure there, a well, restrooms, parking lots, fields, all of that? Where does the council believe that that money should be used? Because that's going to give us direction. That's, that's the difference between a 12 million dollar complex, and an 18 million dollar complex, when you look at the actual infrastructure that needs to go out there. And that's the direction that we need, so that we have a target number. We knew where our target number was, but that was based on infrastructure that was already there, when we were talking about Wally Byham. We found land, there's an infrastructure cost to get out there, and is that 3.8 million dollars going to be used for that infrastructure cost? Or is the city have some other ideas? Is, we just need some direction in that regard. I think that's really what we're seeking, and I think that's what Malcolm alluded to.
I do.
Go ahead, Sam.
So, Brian, the organization, does the organization have any other, other funding sources for, you know, for keeping the current organization going, and for ultimate O and M costs?
Excellent.
Let me ask you, straight up, I mean, are you a volunteer for the organization, or are you, are you a paid staff of the organization?
I serve as the executive director for the Rapid City Soccer Sport Complex, at no fee, at no fee.
Okay.
I work for the Rapid City Soccer League, as their director of coaching, but that's to train their coaches, and train their players. That's a separate initiative.
Okay, so this is a volunteer prospect for you as well?
All of us.
And use soccer as funded in a, in a different way?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Use soccer, the soccer Rapid City organization, has a 10,000 dollar line item right now, specifically for the complex, to help us pay with forefront, and work with some of these, and get some of these initial, and they, they have a revenue stream in place, that they're putting in place. And they're looking at how they maybe increase their fees, or whatever they do. That's their conversation. I sit on their board, I don't have a vote, I just report on what we talk about in our meetings, or what we talk about here.
Well, to help out the discussion, I'd like to let the committee know where my thoughts are, and that is, is that I believe that the 3.8 million dollars is the commitment to the city. There should be no other funds, tax increment financing funds, or other, any other sales taxes, or general funds, to be used. It should be 3.8 million dollars, and that you need to help us with presenting a plan on how that money is to be used. I believe that that responsibility is on, on your organization, and then we, we would then release the funds accordingly. And I think there also needs to be an understanding of what the overall cost is going to, going to be. But I think 3.8 million dollars is it. And I think it would be unfair to other organizations to have, to take more from 2012, or to do a tax increment financing district for a nonprofit organization. I think that that raises a number of questions, as well. I also believe that it's important to demonstrate, as we release this 3.8 million dollars, we shouldn't just release hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money, and then to find out later, that there isn't the support, that the support hasn't been generated, to do the rest. So, I think we need to define what, quote, "the rest" is. So, I think, I'm not sure that a motion is necessary to state that the 3.8 million dollars is all the council has available, because the council's already said, through the 2012 process, that the 3.8 million dollars is, is all that is available. And I'm not sure that it makes a difference how that 3.8 million dollars is used, as long as it's used wisely, in the scope of the overall plan. And so, you need to present us the plan, so that we can determine how that can be plugged in. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Sam. Lloyd LaCroy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just reading over the PowerPoint presentation that you probably gave back in 2004, 2005, and I'll just read off some, some of it for you guys. You know, the key design considerations was to provide adequate parking, provide bathrooms, contain concessions, and easy accessibility. Then, for the complexes, it was to design 25 soccer fields, Phase One of 12 fields. Each field require one acre, and a half acre of parking. Four fields would have lighting, two concession stands with restrooms, fields and gazebo's. And so, I'm assuming, you know, I wasn't around then, but the money was to go towards the complex. We're in kind of a predicament, as far as infrastructure out there, but I think one of the things we've got to remember, as the councils, that if somebody brings something forward, whether it's a TIF or whatever, if there's other benefiting, people out there, you know, I know for sure, on, what road is that? They're on, we were just talking about that the other day. I used to live out there, but anyhow, there, you know, they have a lagoon for the trailer court, and that type of thing, and so there is a need for some infrastructure out in that area. So, I can't sit here and say, you know, we've had discussions that, no TIFs for you guys, because, and so forth, but I think there's a big picture involved, and I can't comment on that. But going by what I'm going over here, to me, it seemed like the money, that's what the money was set for, was for the facility. When you guys come forward, you had two sites, and that was the Wally Byham, and the North Haynes, and this one seemed to work out better for you, as far as size-wise. And so, if you're looking for an answer, that would be mine, is that the 3.8 should be going towards the field. And I would be focusing on how to get infrastructure out there, whether it's fundraising, or working with the other landowners out in that area for something, or whatever it is. But, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Counsel?
Just a couple of questions for Robert Ellis. Depending on their design and build on this program, do we not do oversizing and hookup fees for development, developments and developers, that we could not do, or we could do, for this program? For infrastructure? be other development in that area, that could use that, am I correct? Based on what we've seen for, for future land use, and some other buildings that are going on out there?
Yes, if we did oversize, and the city paid for that oversize, generally what we do is place a construction fee on the benefiting area, that would be outside of the soccer complex, and as people develop to those areas, to the north, east, and west, they would have to pay that connection fee, when they utilize those facilities.
So, while focusing on their fundraising, I guess where I was going with this, is you wouldn't be paying for a 27 and a 16-inch line, you would be paying for an 8-inch, and that would save you money in costs, and based on what's going out there, right now, and other people needing to hook up with water and sewer, I would think that the city would be oversizing, or would be deciding to oversize out there. So, that might help. Some of your program, and some of your talk about the infrastructure that we're talking about tonight, it's not like we haven't done that for other people either, so it's not like we're doing it for a 2012 program. We're doing that because it would be something for the future of Rapid City that would be needed, so. Bill Ocrebkey?
Thank you. Well, I agree with you, Deb. I think we need to look at, if we, we need to keep in mind, and, you know, keep in, keep in mind the apples and apples, and oranges and oranges. I've said this to a few people already, but, and I'm kind of leery of even bringing this up tonight, because I don't want to confuse the issues. But to me, if you're looking at it just from a soccer complex, what is it, what's the true requirement? If you're going to have porta-potties out there, and a few drinking water, and a few drinking areas for water, and it's going to be self-contained, as far as irrigation, what kind of infrastructure, water, sewer, and the streets, are you going to really need out there? If we're just looking at the soccer complex, no, not any other further development. I talked to the mayor and other staff members on this, and it seems to me, a general consensus is that the road out there is sufficient to handle the traffic for the soccer, the way it is now. And if you're going to have porta-potties, you certainly don't need a soccer, or a sewer line out there. And then, if you're going to have a drinking fountain or two, you certainly don't need an 8-inch water line. So, if you're going to look at apples and apples, you know, just look at the soccer, what's the requirements that they're going to come out with? Now, if you're going to look at the rest of it, the potential, once that gets out there, and future development that's already in work, that's already being planned, you're going to need a more extensive highway, you're going to need the sewer line and the water line. But how much of that is, how much should this soccer group, that should bear those costs? And that's the question that's, that's, that's the question here, that they're perhaps asking, and we're thinking about, in terms of requiring them to fundraise. To me, I think we need to be very, very careful in requiring that much money, that much of a financial burden for them, to put in an infrastructure, that will probably be more driven by other development, than with that soccer complex. So, Madam Chair, you can certainly ask the city staff here, if I, if there's any, if there's anything that's wrong with my analogy, but from what I've been able to gather from other people, if we're just looking at the soccer complex, we don't need any infrastructure out there, short of a water line, a drinking water line. So, what are we going to ask these people to do? And again, I was kind of leery about, talking about this in the first place, without confusing the issue, because they need three and a half million dollars to get this thing built. How soon are they going to need the drinking water and the sewer lines out there, before they're ready to use them? It's going to take them a couple, three years, before they can get their ground ready, and the soccer field's playable. So, it's not like they're going to need the water and sewer next week, or next year. Again, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I'm just, I'm just cautioning my colleagues here to be thinking in those terms, and evaluate it. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Bill. Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, you know, I agree with what our, Bill just said, but I think it's been more of the council that's initiated, that you needed to do the infrastructure, and how much it was going to cost, and so forth, to get by. From the meetings that I've attended, since I've been on the council, as far as 2012, we, it seems like we've told all the groups to, to plan for what you need, so you don't have to come back. You know, and, and so I think you've been told, you need the infrastructure, it's going to cost this, you've heard amounts, they want the road bigger to handle, you know, because your, your potential economic impact, you know, if you get the four, the three-day tournaments, you're talking, was it 11 million dollars a year, you could take in by that? And I think when we see those numbers, I think that's where it come from. But I do agree with, with Bill's knowledge on that, is you could get by without it, but I think the roads probably ain't handled for that kind of a tournament and stuff, what would happen during those tournaments? So, those are my thoughts, and I think, I think we kind of conveyed that on to you in our past meetings, and so. But I'm, I'll stick with, to what I originally said, is that, what was your PowerPoint, is that the 3.8 was towards the complex, though? Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. I guess where I was going, so people know, is it's code. It's code, you just can't go put drinking fountains and porta-potties in an area. It's code, if you have that many people, to build that road, if I'm correct, Marcia, and Robert Ellis, is that this is code. This isn't something that we do for just soccer. We do this for everybody, and in order to build this complex for the future, and not just for the now. We wouldn't let anybody else do it, by putting porta-potties and drinking fountains, with that big a complex, and what's going to happen out there for the future. So, I was just kind of following up with code, and not with, you know, just to get by kind of stuff. So, thank you. Malcolm Chapman, please.
I think there are some other improvements that are probably needed, even during Phase One, and I'm not sure what those improvements are, but I think that there are some improvements that are needed. But I think overall, though, what I'm hearing the council say, is that, from a 2012 standpoint, that what the committee and the council committed to then, was 3.8 million dollars, and no more money outside of that, for additional infrastructure. I mean, that's what I'm hearing, and I, I think we do need I mean, that's what I'm hearing and I, I think we do need to vote on it because I've heard different things individually in speaking to council members. And I would hate for us to leave here whenever we finish tonight and six of us are saying, nope, this is what I meant. And then someone didn't say anything, but still they were thinking something else. The council needs to be clear and the council needs to be, in my opinion, on record of saying, regardless of everybody votes for it or not, that this is what we mean. We mean three point eight million dollars, we mean no additional funds for infrastructure. We mean at some point you can apply for a TIF or you can't. I think we need to just be clear about what we're saying and be on record. I'm wearing two different hats here. I'm wearing this hat in terms of working with closely with the soccer community, but also being what I think is a responsible council member. The original 2012 plan said that this soccer complex would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve million dollars. The city and through that whole 2012 process said, yes, we're in the tank for three point eight million plus land. So I think we have to throw the question on the floor. So four years ago, five years ago, that was going to be a twelve million dollar complex. Is that not the case anymore? Or is it just going to be a four million dollar complex and we could say, here's three point eight million dollars and you could go build the complex? Or is there additional funds that truly have to be raised in terms of seven, eight, ten million dollars by the soccer community? And how do we distribute those funds then? And I think the council needs to wrestle with that. How do we distribute funds if there's still seven or eight million dollars to be raised by the soccer community? Because we don't just hand out three point eight million dollars and say, go do it. There has to be some phasing in of that. So I think we should get clear on that, on what their needs are or what their requirements are right now for the different phases and what we're willing to do as a council.
Thank you Malcolm. Do you have a follow-up Malcolm? Ron Wafenbach please.
Thank you, and I think Malcolm summed up a little bit of what I was going to say earlier and the fact is just from Mr. Pitt saying this is going from an eighteen million dollar project to a twelve million dollar project. They said they've raised fifteen thousand dollars in three and a half years. Just being a real, little bit of a reality here. On the other hand, this council, fully aware of what that land had to offer on North Elville Road, no infrastructure, told these people that's where they're going to build their soccer field. So y'all need to look in the mirror because it was in the discussion. We put these people out there in that thing, now we're telling them, no, we're not going to have an infrastructure site for you. But yet they had available Wally Byham, which was set up on the 2012 originally with the infrastructure of minimal cost. Now they're coming back saying, okay, what do we do? And we're sitting up here going, oh, no, doesn't include this, doesn't include that. I'm telling you, as more and more of this unfolds, the reality check starts to come in dimension here with me. And I have a couple of questions for Mr. Pitt. You said you raised fifteen thousand dollars. How much of that money is left?
I don't know right now. I didn't bring a statement with me and to, just to reiterate, there's been fifteen thousand dollars cash donating. There's been over sixty thousand dollars in professional services.
Right, and I asked about the fifteen thousand. How much is left?
I don't have that answer right here.
Is someone in here know? We got three people from the Soccer Association. And you mentioned earlier that you were not paid by the Soccer Association at all?
Not currently.
Not that it matters that you don't have a job with them, they ever paid you to do fundraising?
They paid me initially.
To do some fundraising for them?
From January of two thousand eight until August of two thousand eight, I was paid in August of two thousand eight. I said, I'll continue in the same capacity that I am, but I'm not going to take your money because we need that money elsewhere.
So you were paid to do some fundraising and fifteen thousand dollars, we don't know how much is left. You'd mentioned that this project goes from eighteen million to twelve million on whether the infrastructure is there or not. And I agree with you, I think that we put you out there at some level, this council needs, they should have made that decision when they decided that we're going to put the soccer field in North Elville. I think it's totally behooves me that we're even having this conversation about whether they're going to have infrastructure there or not. I don't agree with it. I don't think that infrastructure should be provided for that, that particular area. But to have this conversation after we already voted them to have that site there, knowing full well, what was required to make that even workable is just beyond me. Looking at some of the other 2012 processes and what's happened is we've required the other people to raise money. I think that it would be appropriate for you to raise, if this is a twelve million dollar project and they're going to give four, a minimum of four million dollars and then come back to the table. I think once you raise four million dollars and come back to the table, then we can have this conversation. You're talking a twelve million dollar project. I think that things change, just like, you know, this project's process started in two thousand three, two thousand four. I've done a lot of research and been on the soccer committee and as things unfold, I see different areas. I've talked to the people in your organization and ask them, how many fields do we need to suffice Rapid City and suffice it into the next ten years? They tell me twelve fields, we have twenty. I look at the process of indoor soccer, how it's grown and the unavailability for those, those facilities, for basketball, indoor soccer, those types of things. I think, I think to be fair, because this has been said on the table, I think that the city shouldn't probably provide some level of infrastructure because we put you there. But I think you guys should raise four million bucks and come back to the table and say, we're ready to move forward. Looking at a twelve million dollar project. Other than that, maybe we need to look at doing something differently. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. Sam Quaker please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, can you estimate how much it would cost to hire a consultant to build the, to build the plan? That's what you're, that's what you kind of need as one of the action items tonight is you, you need to, you need to have a working plan, you don't have a working plan, right?
I don't think that I have a good estimate of that. I can tell you that Wiss's initial estimate was ten to twelve million dollars. But that evaluation was done originally on the Wally Byham site and then it was just kind of transferred over and laid on top of the North Elville roadside.
If I could, let me clarify your question.
The actual cost of a consultant is something that we're looking into right now. And we're looking at Wiss and we're looking at others.
Hold on just a sec.
That's what I was trying to get at Brian, is how, how much funding, I mean, can the consulting, will the consulting services continue to be donated or do you need, let's say fifty thousand dollars to, to build a plan?
They're not all being donated. Soccer Rapid City is paying a portion of those and we haven't seen the bill for what that is yet. And I don't, we haven't specifically asked anyone, what would it cost for you to design this complex on there? These are what we want to see in it. So I don't have a good answer for your question, but I do understand it.
Okay, so, and also you will be bringing forward at some point a business plan to the council as well before the three point eight million dollars is released?
I think a project plan. I think the business plan was part of the original information given when you approved the 2012.
But that needs to be updated. I mean, we, we asked ATA for several updates and it would be a downright shame if we didn't, if we didn't ask your organization, every other organization for similar updates and that same level of detail that we required of ATA. So, well, I, I think what we need to do here is, you know, first of all, I'd like to, like to state that I, I think the way to move forward with this is to, is to release some funds under the close supervision of the city to be used for development of a, of a set of plans and a business plan on a one, on a dollar per dollar match. I think that that's a reasonable thing to do, is to, is to, to release. Maybe, maybe Robert Ellis can help me out here, but I'm, I, you know, if the sixty thousand dollars worth of fees have been waived and those aren't going to be charged, then that's significant research that's already been done that will help the cause. And so I'm, I'm going to make a somewhat uneducated guess that another fifty thousand dollars released on a one-to-one mat, on a dollar per dollar match would greatly assist in developing a set of plans, is a nod. Okay, so to move the discussion forward tonight, I'm going to offer a motion to authorize the release of fifty thousand dollars of the soccer dedicated 2012 funds on a dollar per dollar match for the purposes of, of building the plans.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Can we get a clarification on your motion?
As to, as for every, for every dollar the city gives, the soccer organization or somebody else needs to give a dollar. So that fifty thousand dollars, it's basically would be a hundred thousand dollars. Fifty of it would come from the city and then on a dollar per dollar match, up to fifty of that could be used. I'm sorry.
Ron, speaker?
No. The intent of my motion is for, is to authorize fifty thousand dollars and this cannot be, money cannot be used for, for work that's already been done.
Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, second for discussion on the floor, a fifty thousand dollar match? Any discussion that people's lights on, on that motion specifically on the fifty thousand dollar match? Karen, was yours specifically on the fifty thousand dollar match?
It wasn't, but I have a question regarding the fifty thousand.
Okay.
So I understand the fifty thousand dollar match. My question would be then, are we creating a design plan? Or is this an actual plan that would enable us to move dirt at a hundred thousand dollars?
The only thing that's on there is a fifty thousand dollar match. I don't think it's for specific, if I'm correct. Robert Ellis?
I would venture to say that for a hundred thousand dollars, you could do a preliminary design where you're laying out the utilities, getting a estimate on what it costs for those utilities and then also for the drainage in the streets as well. I think that for a hundred thousand dollars, you could get a preliminary layout, maybe even for a little bit less than that.
Karen Olson?
Then in regard to that, my question for Robert would be, could that include a phasing aspect of it too? So that the plan itself allows the infrastructure to be built?
I would recommend that that plan come forward with estimated cost, laying out what are base costs, what are oversized costs and a phasing sequence to, I guess, to see how you could actually implement building this soccer facility.
Ms. Olson?
Understanding that, I, I think this is a motion that I can support. I recognize it takes dollars to do that. I do have a couple of additional statements that I'd like to make that aren't directly related to this motion on the floor.
Right now, we're just on the motion. If we could, Ms. Olson, then we'll have more discussion if that's okay. Just specific to the motion.
I think this demonstrates a reason, I think this is a reasonable step forward in moving this whole plan forward. Particularly because it will demonstrate the fundraising capability of this organization, which I think is always the question mark when you're talking to nonprofit organizations. Can they, you know, are they capable of putting together the kind of dollars that we're suggesting? So I would support the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Bill Lukrepke please.
Thank you. Yeah, Sam, you had a good idea, but there's some, there's a lot of precedents that we've had since we've done the 2012, since I've been on the council. We've given, we've given money straight up to a variety of different organizations to do the design planning without any monies coming in or any requirement for a dollar, dollar match. We did it, well, we did it for all of them that I can think of. Now there's been, you know, the Doll raised some money, they already had some money. But we never tied when they came to us and said, we want fifty thousand dollars so we can finish up our design. We just gave them fifty thousand. We did it for the, for ATA, we did it for the performing arts. And so I think it's unreasonable and time-consuming to say to this organization, well, we're going to give you sixty thousand dollars, but you got to raise sixty thousand dollars to do it first. I think, I think the first step that they really truly need to do is figure out what they need and what they're going to go for. A more of a concrete design. And if I remember correctly, we talked about this months ago, but something like sixty, seventy thousand dollars, which you're going to need to do that design work by, I guess PATA, I guess, right? Whether that's, that all materials, but that's the kind of money. But I think there's plenty, plenty of precedents for not requiring a dollar for dollar. We haven't done it to anybody else, why are we doing it to them? We're also talking about they need to do fundraising. Well, there's precedence again that we don't require fundraising. We wrote out a check, complete check for the Burn Building that's out in Western Dakota Tech. They needed half a million dollars to build that Burn Building. We wrote out a check for half a million dollars. There was no requirement for any, any fundraising for there. So, you know, I'm, yeah, I'm fighting for these people, of course I am. I just want to, I just want to see it fair and I want to see it happen. I, I would really urge my colleagues here to please not pass this motion and authorize the seventy or sixty or seventy thousand dollars so that they can get the plan going and figuring what they need. Don't, don't hold them back saying that, well, we're going to, we'll give you the money, but you've got to raise the money to, and then when you raise the money, come back to us and then we'll give you the money so that you can go do your design work. Please don't hold them back like that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having them raise money, but I am, I am a little concerned that we're holding them back by putting this requirement for a one, a dollar for dollar requirement. So please be patient with these people so they can move this project forward.
Thank you Bill. Ron Kroger please. This is on the fifty thousand dollar match, please.
What if I want to ask some other questions?
Or just on the motion right now is on the fifty thousand dollar match and then after we vote on that, we can have more discussion.
But I want to ask some other questions.
On the fifty thousand dollar match.
Of course, this is our third go around of 2012. And, you know, to talk about other projects that we've had and what we required is probably, that's probably not some very good factual information that we need because we did at this, this last go around of 2012, change some policies. And I guess, does anybody have the policy of what the requirements were for the projects that we approved? Does anybody have that with them? Malcolm, do you have, could you tell us what we were requiring for the projects as far as money that was required? Matching funds and that type of stuff?
Ron, so this is pertaining to if we ever matched any funds or had anybody else do that, correct? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Malcolm, do you by chance have that information?
Sitting next to our city attorney, so the standard answer is, it depends. Yeah, it varied from project to project. I, I agree with Bill in one sense that others have come forward and we have not required them to have a match when it's design money. I believe that's the way the money is structured in the plan right now. It's three hundred thousand dollars for two thousand eight so that they could go out and do design. And then the brunt of the money is in two thousand nine. We did that with the arts community. We put money in the, in the first year for the Doll and then the brunt of the money in the next year. Money in there for the third year for design for the performing arts and then the brunt of the money in the fourth year without any requirements, dollar for dollar match on design money. But maybe this is a different case because we need to demonstrate that they can go out and raise money. I could support the motion on the floor, but I think we're changing the rules as we go a little bit to say that they have to come up with some dollar for dollar match. Either we're going to believe in the soccer community that they can go out and fundraise and we're going to give them design money out of that three point eight million and it's subtracted from that three point eight. Or we're not, in my opinion. I could support the motion, but that's not what we've required for everyone else. I don't think it spells out in there that, you know, we're going to do it this way for one and do it another way for another one. We didn't go that route to say how, how we should do it in that regard. My larger concern would be about the overall fundraising. What do they still need to raise? And maybe the design will yield this answer that the overall project they're going to build is going to be an eight million dollar project. And then they'll know that they still have another four or five million dollars to go out and fundraise for. To move the process along, I could support the motion on the floor, but I, I do think it's changing the requirement as we go. And this wouldn't be the first time we've done that, so.
Ron Kroger, did that answer any of your questions? Okay. Do you have a follow-up?
Ron, the best I can, it doesn't spell out, and I read him, I read the ordinance again and I read the 2012 application. It doesn't say in there that we specifically will hold someone, that they have to come up with a certain dollar amount on a certain project. Their project said that it was a ten to twelve million dollar project. The city said, we give you three point eight in land, that's what we said.
Thank you Malcolm. Ron Kroger please.
If I may, uh, ask Malcolm a question. He did state that, uh, we'd appropriated three hundred thousand dollars this year for design?
Malcolm?
Three hundred thousand, actually in two thousand eight.
Or in two thousand eight. Did we have any, uh, requirements or stipulations on that three hundred thousand?
It doesn't show on the 2012 plan, it doesn't show that at all. It just says three hundred thousand. Over in another column, it does say, and I think this speaks to some of Sam's concerns, uh, it does say that soccer will continue to play the O and M. It does say that over in another column on that, but that's the requirement that I saw on there.
But the assumption that would have to be is that the council did allocate three hundred thousand dollars to do design on the soccer fields without a match?
It just says, yes, three hundred thousand dollars. And, and it doesn't say next to it, Ron, for design, but that's the way we did it for the performing arts. That's the way we did it for the Doll. We put money up front, that first year for design, specifically for design. And then the next year, the brunt of the money came.
Okay, if that, if that's the case, then, uh, I'll just state that I'm, I'm not going to support the motion on the floor because I think we've already went through this then evidently and, uh, I will not support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. If they're specifically on the fifty thousand dollar match, we'll go with that first and then we can always have more conversation after, um, if that's okay with the council. Um, Karen Olson, please.
I can't speak to all the projects, but I know when the Doll Center came in, they had banked a substantial amount of money and I'm guessing it was a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred thousand dollars when they came in for the very beginning of their project. I can't speak to all the other projects, but I'm pretty certain about that. And I don't, Rod is in the background, maybe, maybe you have some specific. But I'm pretty sure that project had some substantial amounts of money when they came in to begin the design phase. So, um, and all the purpose of that is, is to, is, it, it does two things. It says, number one, this is an organization that has skills to raise money. Number two, it's an organization that has the organizational ability to reach out. And number three, um, it shows some wide community support. And those are three important qua, those are three important criteria. When you're going out and raising money, you have, you have to demonstrate all three of those things. Number one, you've got folks who can do it. Number two, you have, um, the ability to manage that money. And number three, there are people in the, in, in the community that support it in major ways.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Lloyd LeCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, first of all, I'll say I won't support, support the motion on the floor because I think we're, it's, it's creating more problems than, than it's worth. The second part I want to point out to everybody that is, there were, uh, 2012 committee questions that, uh, that was asked to the group before this was brought forward. If you look on page eleven and twelve of that, you'll, you can read through it. And I just want to read for you so they clarify what we're talking about here. It'll answer a lot of the questions that we've said have they asked. Number one, does the construction cost include the purchase of the land? Answer, no, it does not. The request for 2012 funding is currently four million dollars on city-owned land. If the city land is not available, we request an additional two million for land acquisition and water development. And then we go down to, I'll go down to number three that I think's important is, can this organization realistically expect to raise four to six million dollars, four, uh, four to six million in grants for construction? The answer is private corp, private and slash corporate sponsorship and donations, private, state, federal grants, in-kind work and tax increment financing. So they identified those right off the bat as, as funding sources. Uh, then further down, we, we get into number seven is, how much, how much of the cost would be streets, sewer, water, street lighting? And please break out the figures. And the numbers are, street and parking lighting, one point five million. Sewer, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Water, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then it says, "These figures are based on the Wally, Wyleum site. They will change if a different site is used."
So this has to do with the fifty thousand match by?
Well, I think it's unrealistic. And I just, I think this is information that we need to hear before we voted on the fifty thousand match. So I'll end with that. Thank you.
I appreciate the facts on that. Um, you were discussing it because of the fifty thousand dollar match, what was based on facts that was put on the table before. Thank you. Lloyd? Um, next is Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that Ms. Olson pointed out an important fact. The availability to raise funds for this project is very important. And I think that this would be a step in the right direction to get the project moving forward. And I don't think it's asking that much. The project's been on the table three and a half years. They've raised fifteen thousand dollars out of the potential eight million dollars. I don't, I don't think asking, I don't think, uh, the motion on the floor is asking for that much to move forward to show that there's some, there is some, uh, support behind us in the community. There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions to be answered here. And if you guys want to stick your heads in the sand and not think about them, I guess that's the way it is. But soccer is big because of the fees that, that, that they can charge are so low to keep, to keep it operating at a level that everybody can participate. I'd be interested to know what their numbers have been from last year to this year in reference to how our economies changed, how things changed, things in our community changed. Seven months out of the year, you can't play soccer. I'm just saying, we've got, I think that it is important going forward that if, if there's a support behind us in the community, people will stand up and they'll give their money to support the program. And it's been three and a half years. I've been to several of these meetings and seen the same six or seven people. I have some concern and I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to hide it from anybody. There's a lot of taxpayer money here on the table and if it's my money, I'm going to make sure it's well invested. I can tell you that right now. And I just would ask that my colleagues open their pocketbooks and spend their money just like we spend the taxpayers' money today. And if we think this is viable, we put these people out there on the site. You guys chose that as a council, we chose that? Then let's stand up and do it. Well, let's face the reality, the facts. If there is support in the community, which they say there is, they'll have no trouble matching for, on this recommendation that's coming forward, none whatsoever. And that's a good faith, that's their effort to move forward after three and a half years. And if it was your money, how would you spend it? That's all I ask.
Thank you, Ron. Ron Kroger, please.
During the course of 2012, we've had a lot of, a lot of different projects that we have, have done. And every one of them is, is really kind of different than the other. But the one that we have done that is basically like soccer is the girls' softball fields. And I guess my question would be, what did we do for a, girls' ASA softball? Did we do, uh, fund the design of that complex or not? I think we did.
Marcia or Jason, does anybody know the answer? RJ? For the ASA softball girls' fields? Was there fundraising done or matching or did we pay for it?
The city funded the design, um, and the, the city built, built the complex. Um, the ASA Association built the building, built, built the structure. As far as infrastructure, there was, really wasn't, it, well, there was some, a little bit of infrastructure that had to be brought in. That was, that was part of the complex cost.
Okay, does that answer your question, Ron?
RJ, do you remember what the, what the total project cost was for that facility?
Uh, I'm, I'm stretching a little. I, I think it might have been, uh, I, I believe it was somewhere around a million. I think, I think the building was somewhere in the range of, of two hundred thousand value.
Okay, but the...
I mean, I could get you that information.
Okay, well, I guess, you don't, you don't need to. I guess, and like I said, every, every project we've had 2012 has been different. But the one thing is, you know, sports, uh, we've done a few of those and we've never required any of them to come up with the design dollars to do those complexes. And I don't know why we should treat soccer any, any different. If they need, uh, we've already allocated three hundred thousand dollars for design that facility. I think we need to do that, just like we did for, uh, for girls' soccer. So again, I will not support the motion on the floor. And, and I just, you know, it's, it's been really tough for these people. It, it's really tough. I don't know how, I, I'd like to know how many people up here could go and raise money for any organization and, uh, the people ask you, uh, well, where's it going to be built at? Or, or when's it going to start or whatever? They're all going to tell you to come back later. I mean, it's, I, I, we, we put a unfair burden in front of these people to request that they fundraise when they have no ability to, to do it without the consent of the council. I, I don't know how anybody could do that. So let's defeat the motion on the floor, allow them the three hundred thousand dollars to design this facility. So we have some dollar amounts that are, are, are fairly close. So we know if this is a go or a no-go on both sides of the aisle here. So with that, I would call the question.
It's been a motion to call the question? Do we want to vote? Jason, do we vote on calling the question?
If the motion is deemed in order, yes, you would vote on it.
Would it be deemed in order? Okay. Do, do we have a second on the calling the question? Okay.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
We have one speaker on here. Is anybody opposed to Ron Weifenbach speaking or do we have to vote on calling the question first? So I have to, okay. Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I can't believe that someone could go on and give a speech and then all of a sudden say, "Call a question." I think...
Yes, Ron. Tell me...
I, I came here tonight to, to talk about soccer. Let's talk about it.
Hold on just a sec, Ron. Jason, please.
It, it is inappropriate to bring a motion for the previous question after speaking. So my recommendation would be that the chair deem the motion out of order and that you proceed with the discussion.
Okay. If that's okay. We're going to call it out of order and Ron Weifenbach, please, uh, you do have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I, I, we had a special meeting for this and all of a sudden we're going to stop people from talking about trying to work this out and let these people move forward? That's why this whole thing started in the very beginning because of this same fiasco that takes place.
We appreciate you, Ron.
I almost forgot my train of thought. And the, and the fact of the matter is, is if we're going to compare apples to apples, let's compare apples to apples. Girls' softball had nowhere to play. They had no fields, zero fields. We have fields right now. Let's do this thing right. I, I think there's a lot of changes in the last three and a half years that we have to take into account. So I just want, I just, if we're going to compare apples to apples, that's fine. If we're going to compare apples and oranges, we can, we can do that. So, uh...
Do you have another follow-up, Ron?
No, I'm just saying, let's, let's talk about apples to apples here and let's have a good conversation and move forward and not just stifle the conversation and say we've had enough.
Thank you. We do have Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This decision is especially difficult for me, um, one being very new to the 2012 and the whole process. The history is not always so easy to find as, as has been shown here. I thought all the women Olson rose, raised some good points of an organization where you have the leadership and you have the leaderships of the, you have the leadership of the organization, their ability to organize. And then you have community support. And with all three of those, yes, you have a viable organization, you can do a lot of great things. One thing that's been confusing to me throughout my short tenure here is how organized soccer is. Um, I think the first meeting, we had two or three different, uh, little groups of people and anytime a question was raised, they'd look at each other and say, "Okay, well, I guess I'm the designated speaker." I'm a bit tentative about just releasing three hundred thousand dollars to an organization that in my eyes hasn't really shown how organized they really are.
Sorry, Mr. Costello, you're talking about the fifty thousand dollar match substitute motion?
I'm getting there, yes, if I may.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. The first issue with fundraising was land. They said we couldn't fundraise without land, so we designated land. Uh, now we're saying we can't fundraise without knowing where the three point eight million goes. And I understand how it's difficult to fundraise without a design. And, okay, in short, based on how I don't see a, a strong organization, I would be for the motion on the floor where that is, show us how organized you are. Show us how you can fundraise. Say, "Look, we need to get this design out there so we can move this along." And, um, come back and make us eat our words. Those are against, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Ron Kroger, please.
I guess, you know, first of all, I, I, I just want to say the reason to call the question was not to stymie discussion but, uh, was to hopefully move on so we could open the discussion back up because the motion on the floor is really limited in what a person can talk about. And then the last comment I'll make is, uh, Mr. Weifenbach said that, uh, the girls' softball never had a, had a place to play. Well, I, I've been involved in, in baseball and softball for a long, long time. And I mean, twenty-five years ago, I know girls had a place to play at that point in time because they used to manage them. And I would assume that was in place when, uh, we built the fields out there is that there were still areas in Rapid City where girls could play softball. So, uh, with that, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron Kroger. And again, the motion on the floor is for the fifty thousand dollar match. When you want to have that, uh, vote, that would be fine. There is discussion on the floor still. Sam Quaker? Thank you, Sam. He yields the floor to Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I, I think I could support the motion on the floor, but I, I, I think we're breaking some new ground here by requiring them somehow soccer is special. There are several different soccer entities that are coming together to make up soccer Rapid City. It's the, uh, Youth Soccer League, the Men's League, the Rushmore Soccer Club, Tech. I mean, so all of these different entities have their own representatives that sit at a larger table to represent soccer Rapid City. I, I think they are organized. I, I don't think they could have gone through that process of convincing the 2012 committee and then convincing the council that they were worthy of three point eight million dollars. So I think they passed that test or are they worthy? Do they merit three point eight million dollars? Do, as a community, are we behind soccer? I think they passed that test. And I think where we're trying to get to now i- is a, a, another one. Can they go out and fundraise? Can they go out and, and do what they wanted and what they are trying to do? I, I think we're putting an undue requirement on them to ask them to come with a match for design money. I, I don't recall that we've done that anywhere else, but it seems as if we're stuck. I, I think what I heard at one point that you probably could do this design work for about seventy thousand dollars. Somewhere in our soccer meetings, I've heard that number thrown around. And what we're talking about now is a hundred thousand. So i- if we have to put some match requirement on them, why don't we say they match the city fifty cents to a dollar? And that would get us to seventy-five thousand dollars. So it's, you know, satisfying this need that they can go out and raise twenty-five thousand dollars. And at the same time, um, the city is coming to the table with money that I think is in there for design already, which is up to three hundred thousand dollars that's there. So it's requiring that they go out and do something, but at the same time, not putting an extreme burden on them to say that you've got to match dollar for dollar. And that's just an idea right now. I think that the way this process will move forward is that whatever we come up with and vote on tonight, somehow will then be recommended to legal and finance and then on to the council or maybe just on to the council. But, um, it's just a thought. I'm not going to put that out as a substitute motion, but just a thought that as we continue to talk about the fifty thousand or seventy thousand or hundred thousand dollar design money, that maybe we factor in some smaller percentage. And if you give it to me, you know, we'll be at twelve and a half cents per dollar. So, you know, I, there's some other number, I think. We can do some sort of sliding scale to get there. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Malcolm. Just a couple of things. We're talking about a fifty thousand dollar match on a design. And it seems like to bring the designs forward, we've never done that. I could see on the matches, once we've got the design plan, but it doesn't make sense on a plan for a design plan to do a fifty thousand dollar match. Um, I, I'm seeing both sides of this because you want to make sure that people have a business plan. So, um, both sides of this, people are right. But the other side of it is, don't kill their, their dream. And if on the design and build plan, um, they, I think Robert brought that forth in a very positive way that if you can just kind of see where they're going and if it doesn't look economically feasible and they cannot raise anything once they have a design and build plan like the Doll and other people did, then it should start coming in the match. I know the Doll, they did raise money, but they also, um, started...
I know the DALL, they did raise money, but they also, um, started with tw- some of our 2012 fund, and then they were able to raise more, so it, it really helped. It's, it helped to show, so on that match, um, be fair. I can see, see the match once the design and build plan's ready, but I don't think the match before is being fair. We've done parking garages, and civic centers, and, and Roosevelt Parks, where we didn't have all our perfect numbers. So, we're all guilty of the same thing, and we're telling these people something the opposite of what we even did ourselves by the numbers. I know when I do a business, um, you can have the business plan, and then it becomes bigger and better. They can start with a phase one, and then, once they get the design and build plan, that $50,000 match would be pretty simple, because they have a plan. But I guess that's where I'm going. I wouldn't, I wouldn't start a $50,000 match now. I'd wait till they had the design and build plan, and then, after that, see where they go. That would be fair for, for all the things that we do. I gotta see a business plan before I say how much I'm, I'm gonna plan to match, just seeing what they're doing. So, those are my comments. Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I respectfully disagree with your thought process, just because things were, were done in certain ways, and then we could go back through, and if we've, nobody ever has to seem to have the final actually answers of what was done here, where, or whatever. I think you gotta look at each individual project and say, "What makes sense?" And we're talking about $12 million project, we're talking about a $50,000 match. It makes sense, it's a good faith effort, and, and the unity of the soccer, of the soccer people, I, I, I respectfully disagree. I don't, I don't know that it's always there. It's there for the entire, for adult league, and all these leagues. I don't think they understand the ramifications of, of all this. I've been in some of the meetings, asked for particular information, and financial information, per se, from some of the organizations, haven't brought it forward. Not any of them. I mean, I, so I disagree with the fact that they are unified in this whole thing, and I think that this will unify them. If they have to raise $50,000 to go forward with their project, we'll know whether they're unified or not. I think, I can't believe that it, it is that difficult to, just to say, to ask them to do this. I, I, I don't, I don't think you compare them to any other project. I think that some of the council people up here made that comment before, but yet keep wanting to compare them to the other projects. It's, it's different. This is a big project, costs a lot of money on the table, and there's a lot of taxpayer dollars on the table. This is not my money. This is the taxpayer money, and I wanna make sure that is well protected, and that we spend it wisely. I've been up here for two years, and I think that it, I don't, the way things are done in the past don't always make sense, trust me. I, I think that it, I think that there's an opportunity here, to make a good fa- good faith effort going forward, make sure that these, these, uh, organizations are unified in their fundraising processes. There's a long ways to go to make this thing happen. There's plenty of fields right now to play the games on that they have. We've already went into middle of April, haven't even been able to play a game outside, and probably won't be for the whole month of April. So, I'm just saying, I, I, asking someone to bring a good faith effort forward is, is not too much to ask. $50,000 out of $8 million? I, I just think it, it makes sense. If it was my money, that's how I'd want it spent.
Thank you, uh, Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I offered the motion earlier tonight, in part because I didn't sense that the, that this committee had a direction on where we were going tonight, and I'm starting to really get that sense now. And if you defeat, if you defeat, if you defeat this motion, it won't be the first time that one of my motions has been defeated, but I'm, but I am going to ask and insist that, that another motion then be brought forward, so we don't stay here and endlessly discuss this tonight. But one of the reasons that I think that this motion is a worthy motion to consider is because I think it would be a travesty for the city to release $300,000 when, when the fundraising commitment has not been, uh, established. And let's use the example of, of ASA. I believe that the, and I can be corrected on this, but I believe that the, the, that it wasn't a one-for-one match, but the city, uh, the city did release, uh, funds, and ASA also kicked in funds at the same time. With the DALL and ATA, they came forward with specific amounts that they had available also to help, and, uh, so I, I think that this is a, a worthy motion to consider. I, I, I heard Alderman and Costello earlier tonight, and also in the past, asking, uh, this organization about fundraising, and expressing, I think rightful, uh, some very good questions on, on the fundraising capability that needs to be demonstrated. This motion is a, is a good way, uh, to do that. Again, if this motion fails, and a motion is on the floor to release the full $300,000 without any accountability, I think that would be a terrible decision to make, because then we would be releasing all of these funds, and then we still might not have any fundraising taking place. And, folks, we, we can't allow that to happen. These, this isn't our money that we're releasing. This, this is taxpayer, uh, funds. And so, I, I would ask that this motion be, uh, uh, voted on, up or down, preferably up, and there'll be plenty of time to discuss this as it moves through legal and finance and the, and the council. Thank you.
Just a question. When we release funds for design and build, isn't there have to be a, a plan set forth for that accountability? When you do a design and build, don't they have a specific amount that is set forth to us? We don't still release 300,000? We release, Jason Green?
Design build really refers to a bidding process that we, at this point, don't use here in Rapid City. I think the way that we would handle this is by having the city staff prepare a request for proposals for design services, take that through the usual consultant selection process, and then at the time, the council was ready to award a contract, we would look to soccer folks for any match that may be required by the council. If no match is required, then the council could just award the design contract through our usual process.
So, we could still disagree with what we're saying today, if they wanted to, um, we could move this forward without the match, and if people disagreed with that at that time, once it was brought forward, they could say nay or yea? Am I correct?
Well, I, I think it would be important to identify whether you're going to require a match before you go out for proposals, so everybody understands the ground rules. I could see, um, the, the soccer group coming forward with a match of a contribution of design services, for example, that may give one proposer an advantage in the, in the consultant selection process. So, I think that issue needs to be ironed out before you ask for proposals.
I, I, I guess I'm just not understanding the no accountability to the taxpayers, and a couple other things, because of, of fundraising, and being a fundraiser and $50,000 match doesn't seem like that much, but again, economic times have changed. The ability of what you have to sell when you are fundraising is a major player in how much money you raise. If you are a fundraiser, and you are looking for money, guys, you have to have something to sell. And I mean, whether that be the, the design, or what we're talking about. And if you don't think that's worth it, then we shouldn't go forth in any way, shape, or form at this point, because I know if I had to go raise money for anything that I've raised for a substantial amount, I had to have a plan. I have to have a design plan. It's not design and build, and I, I appreciate, uh, him, Mr. Jason, correcting me on that, but you have to have a design, guys. So, a $50,000 match is not fair at this point. If you don't think this is going forth, a design plan in order for this dream of these people, whether it be ATA or anybody, um, they need that money to start. And for you to require them at $50,000 match with no design, I don't know how they're gonna sell it, how they're gonna raise it. You can't, I'm telling you from a fundraising standpoint, it's very hard with no, no design plan. And then, just to see at these, at, I, I know it's hard times, I understand that part, but this will be able to, even if they did phase one, give them the dream at phase one, you're giving them no dream. You're saying 50,000. You're saying accountability. Be accountable for what we committed. We committed 3.8 with 300,000 and 2,008, as Malcolm said, for the design plans. Now, we're backing up, and we're saying 50,000, you match it. We're changing the rules. That's not fair, and it's not a good way to sell what they're trying to do at this point. It's up to them to do it, and it's up to them to use that money for what we said and we committed. Sam Quaker, please. Thank you. Motion on the floor is a $50,000 match. Is there objection to calling a question? Hearing none, move directly to the vote. All in favor of, okay, Amber's gonna read the motion, please.
The motion was by, um, to authorize the release of $50,000 of the soccer funds with the dollar-for-dollar match for purposes of developing plans.
Has everybody got that motion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do we have roll call, please? Quaker?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Kroger? Costello? Adcock?
No.
LaCroy?
No.
Martinson?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Okraki?
No.
Chapman? That's four to six. Six to four vote, if I'm correct, Amber?
That's right.
Okay. Motion fails. Council, do we have another motion that we'd like to put on the floor tonight? Or more discussion? Malcolm Chapman, please.
Yeah. I mean, I, I hear where Sam's going, and, and I agree, I, I agree. I, I don't know if, I, I don't know if I'm ready to put a motion on the floor, but I mean, I, I do think that there should be some money authorized for, um, design. I, I don't know if I'm ready to say that right at this moment. I, I agree with Ron Kroger. Let's continue to have discussion, I mean globally, I mean, we narrow the discussion when we start to put motions on the floor, so let's have the discussion. I think we'll come back to that about design, uh, whether it's a sliding scale, or it's up to 70,000. I mean, we'll come back to that. I mean, it's been raised, it's, it's a valid point, so I, I think we'll get back there before we finish tonight. But I, I would just say, let's have a global discussion, if there are other questions that we wanna ask for them, or other conversation that we need to have, but, you know, I...
We have many on the floor, on the...
We, we, we convolute things a little bit by putting motions on the floor. We take the discussion just in a certain direction.
Thank you. And I appreciate sometimes a motion, 'cause it does get discussion as well, so I, I can see both sides of that. Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think Malcolm was right. I think our purpose of, of our meeting here tonight was to give you some direction, and I think you got the direction. And somehow, when we get together, we feel we have to have a motion to throw out and, and get through it, but I think discussion was, well, I, I mean, if we go through, uh, the 2012 presentation, and the 2012 questions that were presented when it originally started out, I think that answers a lot of questions from the very beginning. And I, and I'm, for one, haven't read it until just recently. If I would've read it prior to all this, I'd probably, would've been more prepared throughout all the, the process, but I mean, it does answer a lot of questions. These were brought up way prior. Nothing's been new, nothing's been hidden, it's, it's, it's all been right there. And, and if you look through it, uh, some of the funding is, all that was thought out, folks. It was. I mean, the questions were answered five years ago, and we're still talking and, and quabbling over the same, same things that were asked 12, five years ago. So, I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's gone on here tonight. I guess I would, my question would be, uh, for Brian is, or, is that, Brian?
Yes.
I, if he's comfortable with what he's heard so far tonight, of a direction where they need to go, uh, and that would be my question.
Brian, please.
I think we are comfortable with the direction that we're heading. Malcolm's right, there was, at the last 2012 meeting in 2008, they, they asked if we needed money. We said we didn't expect to do any building, but we would have some design costs. They allocated $300,000. We haven't, we haven't gone into that, because we didn't have land at the time, and it's hard to design something if you don't know where it's gonna go. From there, um, I think that the task force meetings have been very beneficial. It's helped kinda narrow down the process, and really point us to what, what needs to be in order, you know, and how the order needs to go. I think, for me, I just wanna clarify a few points. I, I wanna make sure that everyone understands that I came in, 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 in 2008 in January, uh, and there was, there was a different person that was leading the charge at that time. We didn't have these. These, we didn't have business cards, we didn't have thank you cards, we didn't have a website, we didn't have any of this stuff. And we put that together. I did a lot of the work, and we brought it back to committee, and we've gone through it, and we hacked through it. This stuff doesn't just appear, and, and so I, I took a little offense to Mr. Wyffenbach's co- comments, that for my money, I...
Madam Chair?
You know?
Yes. Sorry.
I'd like to respond, if he wants to point me out particularly.
At this point...
Can I finish my comment?
Hold on just a sec, guys. We're gonna stop this.
If I could call a point of order, please.
Please don't, uh, give me just a sec, Sam. Please don't mention names, if you would.
Okay. I take offense to the comment that...
Point of order, please. The, the, the question, if there's a question, the individual needs, that needs to be answered directly.
Thank you.
But as far as this back and forth, that's not, that's not right.
That's true. If we could just move on to the subject and not people, that would be better. I, I know some of the things have been said, you can have, um, conversations on, when we're done with this meeting, with other people.
Just hold us all to that, then.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, the, the point is, is that there's been a lot of work. There's a lot of unity.
Point of order. If we ask a question, can we just get the question answered, so we can keep moving? Or are we gonna suspend rules, or...
Okay, Ron, he's trying to answer those questions without going into specific people. We've had a lot of time to talk, so, um, if we could, um, let Brian have a few minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes, Mr.?
I have no problem with that, but if we're gonna have Robert's Rules of Orders, and everybody else is gonna abide by them, we should run the meeting like that, so it runs smoothly, so they understand also how, how they can participate, too.
Okay. So, you're asking the question of what right now?
Right. Whoever asks the question, if he's answered the question, that's fine, and then let someone else answer a question.
In all fairness, um, I'm gonna let Brian Pitts talk, and then if any of the council members would like to visit after that, um, I would appreciate, uh, we give the speaker some leeway here. We've had a lot of council members that have discussion. Brian Pitts, please.
To answer Alderman LaCroy's question, uh, you've done a great job of giving us some directions. We'll update the business plan. The task force meetings have been very beneficial in terms of putting things in order, and kind of giving us the direction of which pen to knock down first. And, uh, we're working. We can't go to design and build until we get some flood elevation studies, because, uh, as we all know, that that land is, uh, in, in a flood plain, and in order to establish where buildings may be able to lie, we need to figure out where the flood elevations lie. And that's what we're going through right now. And we're doing that on our own accord. We didn't come to the city and ask for any of the $300,000. We're footing that bill and working with a, 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 a city or organization, or a, an organization in our city to do that, because we thought that would show a good faith effort on our part. So, uh, you have answered it. A little ambiguous as to whether or not the infrastructure, I think your points are, are well-taken, in that the infrastructure costs that we projected when we brought this to 2012 were based on infrastructure being at the facility. So, I, I hope that you consider that, and I hope that you take that in, into consideration when you make these other considerations. And it's also important, I think, that we recognize that, that the TIF conversation wasn't something that was brought up yesterday. something that was brought up yesterday, it wasn't something that was brought up on a whim, it wasn't hit, we weren't hitting the back of the head with it, it was forethought, and we knew that there were gonna be some costs, and that we, and we brought it out and put it on the table up front. So, we've tried to be open, and, and we're working hard, and, and we are an organized, uh, organization of twenty-two hundred players, and that's just kids, and it doesn't include the hundred and fifty adults that play every summer. Uh, the fields that we currently have are underwater, that's because they weren't properly built, they're not all, uh, crested at the, at the, at the right dimension, so the water doesn't run off, and we postponed our season, kids aren't gonna get to play. So, we can provide a better service, we can provide a lot more things to our players, and that's what we're trying to do, and that's our goal, and we're not, we're not gonna stray from that.
Thank you, Brian.
And we'll work with you.
I appreciate that, sir. We do have some other council lights, if we could, if you want to ask, um, Brian Pitts questions, or Malcolm Chapman on some of these, um, issues, um, that would be appropriate, we're trying to get to our direction, if I'm correct, so Karen Olson, please.
In trying to understand where you're going and what I think, um, we approved, the very, in first place, we started with, was a vote in which we designated a site. And when I voted for that site, I did so based on what I believed was your recommendation. I, and, I believe that the grid that we discussed in regard to comparing the various sites included the fact of the presence of infrastructure or the lack thereof. And when I heard your recommendation, knowing those facts, I supported voting for the Wally Bar, or for the Elkvale site. Lloyd has, has referenced some statements made in regard to 2012 in terms of what the city was committing, and I would just, for the record, like to say that my, um, that when you made the designation of the new site, to me, that's changed the rules somewhat, I mean, you were recommending a site knowing full well that there were not infrastructure to the site, and none on, onsite. But, I took your recommendation, and that's why I voted for it, and I think there were a lot, I thought that the advantages of the site outweighed any of the disadvantages, which was accessibility, proximity to the, to I-90, proximity to, um, housing and so forth. So, I won't, I'm not recommending that that decision be rescinded, because I think that's a good decision. But did it change, um, the ground, um, the basic approach in terms of, for me, it did, because I assumed that the city's commitment to this was land and three point eight million dollars. And frankly, I didn't care how you spent the three mil, three point eight million dollars. Be okay with me if you used that all for infrastructure. I'd also support phasing in a project. Um, I've done sufficient numbers of projects over the years to understand that, number one, in, since this was approved in two thousand four, this is a lot of change for costs. So, I would support a plan that included phasing in and funding sections of that, to use the money in the way that both suits the change in the economy. And, um, and so with that in mind, um, if some, I mean, if, if those are the things that need clarifying, I would certainly support some kind of a motion that says, those are the issues, and those are the position of the, of the, um, council, and that you can then go forward and raise money based on that piece of information. And that's what I thought I was coming tonight to do, to just absolutely, for the record, say, three point eight million dollars and eighty acres at the Elkvale site. And with that, it seemed reasonable to me that you could then go forward. And then there might be a point in time in which it would be appropriate to allocate the three hundred thousand. I do understand, um, I thought it was important that Brian has shared the information about the, um, the FEMA measurements, that is an issue, and they're moving forward with that, so.
Is that a motion?
Um, yes.
Three point eight?
I would make a motion that we make it clear that the Elkvale site has been designated, we continue to support that site, which does fulfill the city's commitment for land. And then in addition to that, we acknowledge that three point eight million dollars is designated for, as the city's financial support for this soccer project.
Been a motion in a second, um, for more discussion, Ron Kroger?
Alderman, uh, Okrepke brought up an issue at the beginning of the meeting here, and had to do with the, with the roads and water and sewer. And, I guess the question would be to staff, uh, would the soccer complex, at this point in time, if it was phased in, would the road have to be rebuilt? Would water and sewer have to be put out to that site?
Dale Tech, or Robert Ellis?
Either one. I think it's growth management, actually, to answer that question.
Robert Ellis. Sorry, Dale.
I get it by default. You know, one of the things I would like to see is a traffic impact study, because I don't know how many kids are gonna be using the site, I can't tell you if that road is gonna be adequate for that. Um, that's a big question in my mind. Um, if the council is okay with having porta-potties out there, then no, sewer isn't needed. Will there always be porta-potties? My guess is no, someday we will have a brick and mortar restroom facility that will have to have sewer. Who's gonna pay for that? And then as far as water goes, uh, they could certainly set up a vending machine and sell bottled water and bottled pop out there, and they wouldn't have a need for water, uh, but in the future, they are gonna wanna have that water, so, you know, that's why I think a good engineering plan, laying out, what are the costs for water, sewer, streets and drainage? What does the soccer organization expect to pay for? What do they expect the city to pay for? What's the flood plain analysis, the wetlands assessment? What is the layout of the facilities onsite going to be? And then finally, what is the construction phasing plan, and what are the costs of that gonna be? I, I think that we need to have that information to make good decisions, but to answer your question, yeah, if they can truck out their water and put porta-potties in, and, uh, that two-lane road, it'll work, people come in and out, it's just gonna take 'em a lot longer to get in and out.
Thank you, Robert. Ron Kroger?
Do what?
Stop, Ron. Ron Kroger?
Lost my train of thought here. Robert, uh, the study that you talked about, and you, you, is that the one that you, uh, related the cost of probably less than a hundred thousand dollars to, to get all that information?
I would, yes, I would think around a, a hundred thousand dollars could get you a preliminary water, sewer, street and drainage layout, a cost estimate for each of those with the city and soccer participation breakdown, the onsite improvement layout, a traffic impact study with parking analysis, a preliminary flood plain analysis with wetland assessment, and a construction phasing plan with cost assessments. I think that's the information this council really needs to make a good decision, and how that's funded, I think, is the next big question.
But, but you believe that price could, would be around that hundred thousand dollar mark?
I think you should be able to get something in that ballpark, yes.
Would you like to add a amendment?
No, for right now, I, I'll, I'll yield to the floor, there's a motion on the floor already, thank you.
Um, next is Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Robert, can you cite those three studies again? If I can write that down.
Okay, I have written preliminary water, sewer, and s- street and drainage layout, a cost estimate for each of those facilities with the city and soccer participation breakdown, the onsite improvement layout, which is the soccer fields, restroom facilities, so on and so forth, traffic impact study with parking analysis, so that we can understand what are the street needs, preliminary, preliminary flood plain analysis with wetland assessment to determine how much land is usable out of that eighty acres, and a construction phasing plan with the cost estimates to find out financially how can you actually see this project being developed.
Okay, so, so, uh, traffic study with parking study, water, sewer and street drainage plans, onsite improvement layout, flood plain analysis, and construction plans, did I miss anything?
A wetland, a wetland assessment, I think, would be beneficial.
Is that part of the flood plain analysis? I could-
Not necessarily, because if there are, say, ten acres of wetlands, they're gonna have to mitigate ten, maybe twenty acres of wetlands someplace else, and that can be very substantial.
I, I think I understand where Karen is going with her motion, but her motion is vague, and I don't, I don't know that the motion gets, gets us much further than what we already have in place, which is, there's three point eight million dollars in, in 2012 total dedicated to the project, and the council's already voted on the, on the site, so, I think it would be best to, to, uh, proceed with, uh, you know, and I'm, I'm going to float this idea, uh, and, uh, based in part on Alderman Chapman's, uh, thoughts earlier on coming up with a better, maybe a better, uh, scale, uh, but I'm going to offer a, a substitute motion, uh, as follows. I would move to, to offer, uh, up to twenty-five thousand dollars upfront with no match, and then up to an additional fifty thousand dollars on a one-to-one match, which makes, which makes a total available of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if all fifty thousand of that is used, and that would be used for the following six items, traffic study with parking study, water, sewer and street drainage plans, onsite improvement layout, flood plain analysis and wetland analysis, and construction planning. That is my substitute motion.
You have a motion in a second? Any questions on the motion that was just presented?
I do.
Someone called the question?
No, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Malcolm Chapman?
Thank you, Madam President, um, again, I think I could support the motion, but I think we're getting right back into that whole match thing. I, I believe that three hundred thousand dollars was put aside a year earlier than the brunt of the money to do this very thing. Why are we now saying, let's not use the money to do that? Again, I, I see where you're going, Sam, and I, and I could support it, I think it moves us along, but we've done this before in terms of setting money aside a year earlier to do that. We've done that with the doll, even though they had money, I understood, I understand they had money on the table, I sat at meetings, talking with them about how to divvy up money that they had raised with the performing arts group, we've given money to the performing arts group to do this very thing, to look at this site selection, and then say, oh, that's not it, and then let's look at another one, we've given them money to do that, we didn't ask them for a match. No one then said, well, what about taxpayer dollars? Well, all this money is taxpayer dollars, and we're all concerned about it, we all are, trying to be responsible, so, when I hear that argument about, we're trying to be responsible with taxpayers, we're always trying to do that, it's nothing new for this council, so, I, I guess I would ask a question, if I could ask a question of Sam.
Is that okay, Sam?
Answer the question.
Is that a yes?
What, what's the hangup about this match? I don't, I'm, I'm trying to get, what's the hangup about the match? We, I think we set aside that money early to do this very thing, to give money to an effort that would give the council then better information once a site was selected. That's what the money's there for, why are we hanging up on this? But if that's gonna hold us up, I, I think that's better than not, that's better than not.
I'll answer that.
Sam, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the question, Alderman Chapman. The reason that I had, the, the reason that I believe that this motion is, is appropriate is because when the other organizations came through, in one way or another, we insisted on, on knowing what their fundraising capabilities were and what they had to contribute, we did, we did, and I will cite ATA as an example, we, we, we made Daphne Richards Cook go, go back a couple of times and give us new portfolios and what, on what we had, and, or what she had, and, and, uh, for us not to do that, uh, something similar, is it the same exact motion? No, but it is, but it is, I think, a reasonable, uh, it is a reasonable action to take, especially in light of the fact that originally, we were told over and over and over by the soccer organization, folks, we need land so that we can fundraise, we need land so that we can fundraise, we need lands that we can fundraise, we need a site to be selected, site's been selected, I disagreed with the selection, I disagree with the process, but the site has been selected, the fundraising should then commence, and one way to take them off, up on that offer to commence with fundraising, now that the site has been selected, is to encourage them to do that by, uh, we're, and, again, my motion offers twenty-five thousand dollars upfront with no strings attached, and then an additional fifty thousand dollars on a one-to-one match, and, uh, if this motion fails, the motion that's on the floor really doesn't give us much, it doesn't specifically direct any studies to be, uh, to be done, it doesn't take us in a specific, uh, uh, direction, so I, I think that this, uh, and I understand, Alderman Chapman, where you're, where you're going with the, with your question, and I think you understand where I'm at on this, is, is that this is, this is my effort to say, okay, they have the land, and, and now that they have the land, the fundraising can start, this is the way to, to help spur that along, and so I, I would ask for everyone's support on this motion, including our chairwoman.
Thank you, Sam, for answering that question.
Madam Chair, do I still have the floor? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Malcolm Chapman.
Again, I, I get to this point where, um, the, the money is set aside for that, maybe I misframed the entire discussion tonight by saying that they couldn't go out and fundraise without knowing what the council was asked, the expectations of the council. Uh, I, I don't think that's what I said, but, uh, if I said that, then maybe I misframed the discussion. The discussion is not, they can't fundraise without knowing the expectations of the council, the, the, the real argument is, what should they fundraise toward, not knowing the expectations of the council? Should they be out fundraising for infrastructure in addition to what's on their, on the soccer fields? And I think that, in, in Karen's motion, and I do agree that we probably do need to put something in there about release of some funds for, for design, whether it's staggered or graduated or matching or something, but, um, the question, so, i- if they have to do the infrastructure, which preliminarily, we said it was about four and a half million dollars, but that will be shared as development happens out in that area, if they have to do that, then they're not fundraising for, just to build soccer fields, they're fundraising for infrastructure. So, I think that's why this discussion is important. What's the expectation level, and we need to clarify that. No, we will not, the city will not give an additional penny toward infrastructure, period, three point eight million dollars and land as is. I, I mean, I think that gets it, with the release of some funds to be able to go do a design so that we have better information. Those are my comments.
Oh, okay, Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Lloyd's first, and then you, Patty? No.
I guess it's pretty clear that there's some, some fundamental less, um, not so much trust that the soccer people won't be able to, you know, lead up to their side of the bargain, but, that we can. I kind of wanna just have them give the three hundred thousand, let them do the plan, come back and see how much it's actually gonna cost. This is supposed to be a partnership between us and the soccer group. I can understand not wanting to give them the three point five million outright, and then let them do whatever they want without some sort of accountability. Now, I'm not quite sure we should abandon, they have a, that, uh, we have a dollar-for-a-dollar match every single step of the way, but we do need some sort of guidelines of what we can achieve and what they can achieve. Let's start with the thirty thousand to begin with, see how much that we both need to be committed for, and just argue about how we're gonna do that after the fact, after we get more information about how much this is gonna cost everyone. Then we can negotiate, well, what are we going to pay for, what is the responsibility of the soccer people going to pay for? Instead of sort of demanding a single dollar for every dollar we spend every single step on the way, we just negotiate bigger chunks of money, how much, we don't pay how much the soccer people will be responsible for paying.
Thank you, Ms. Patty, Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. President. I just wanna say, I'm not gonna support the motion on the floor, I think the information is good, but the match-to-match, I don't, so I won't support it that way unless the motion maker changes it around, it, we do the, the design, we fund that, because it's, it's not just for the soccer group, we need that information for that area also, as far as what needs to be done out there, and so forth, so I think it's kinda unfair to ask, do it that way. But, uh, I wanna thank Mr. Ellis for, uh, identifying the needs that we need to do, because those are very important for us all to move forward, and I think that's a good, good thing that we can do, I just don't think we should tie it up with the match-to-match, because I think there's too much in stake. And, if, if we wanna continue on with this motion, I'll, I'll vote no, and I'd ask for another motion to do exactly what we need to do with the design money, which was the three hundred thousand that was designed, that was there to do exactly what it's supposed to, and that way, 'cause it is city-owned land now, you know, it, it's not like it's somebody else's land, so we are in this, we do have some responsibility. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd, um, Bill Okrepke, please.
Thank you. You know, I agree with Alderman LaCroy and Martinson, I think they're right on the mark here. Here we are, we're trying to make some decisions, we're trying to move forward and, and give them some ideas on where we are, and we don't have a clue. I mean, how can we ask them, how can we ask ourselves if we don't have a plan in front of us? Right now, we don't know, it's just, they, they put together something four years ago, and I'm sure it's gonna change significantly by the time it gets back to us again, but I think we, I think it's, it's to our advantage to authorize whatever money we want to authorize, and I suspect that'll come up with another motion, I'm hoping, but to authorize them some money so that they can go ahead and do the plan, then let them come back and find out, then, then come back to us, and then we can go from there, but right now, we're just guessing, and we, you know, we're talking, we're going back and forth, but we're just guessing the bottom line. So, I'm not gonna, I, I, I'm not a- So I'm not gonna, I'm not in favor of this motion either, and I hope that there'll be another motion following that talks about authorizing some money. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ron Wyfenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this motion offers up a good compromise, and it satisfies everyone's needs here. It allows the soccer people to move forward with their design in their responsible manner. It gives, I mean, it's gonna give us a picture of what needs to be done. They don't even really, or we, I guess, don't even know what type of infrastructure improvements need to be done out there. It seems like these six items will attack those one at a time, and then it will, at that point, I still believe that the council voted on moving that land there. At some level, there's some responsibility by us. We knew it going into it, and every one of us that voted for it knew what we were getting into. I think this is a good compromise moving forward. It gives them time from now till this study's done to raise funds. I think overall, this is a win-win, and it moves the project forward. And then when it comes back with the studies, and the studies are done, and we analyze it, we'll be able to tell them that this will be the participation, or this will be the non-participation. But at some level, I just, I think this is a win-win for everybody, and I think this points in the prime position of where we want to go, gives them direction. So when we started this conversation, while we built the task force originally, was to move them forward in some manner. I can guarantee I won't be in support of anything beyond the 3.8. I could say that today, and unconditionally, it won't change my mind. But for overall, this would be a good process to go through on finding out what infrastructure is needed out there. Our engineers can't even tell us if larger roads are needed without the traffic studies. We don't know what we need for sewer water. It just seems like we're taking what, something that's not broken, we're trying to fix it, and creating a larger problem, but in essence of the process, I'm willing to go through it. I don't, I don't think it makes a lot of sense in the end, but I'm willing to support this motion.
Counsel, we are going around in circles on this motion like the last one. If we could be specific on what we're talking about, or if we want to change something, we're saying the same things. Each person's just kind of repeating some of that. So I encourage everybody to have discussion, but we're repeating the same things over and over again on some of this motion. So I encourage you, if it's gonna be repeated the same thing, or you're not in favor, let's get on with this motion. Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Madam President. I will ask my colleagues to vote the motion down. I think the motion that Karen put on the floor starts to get us there. I do think that there should then be another motion put on the floor. I hear our public works folks, and Dell is on this committee, and we've had this conversation. There's $300,000 that's set aside, I believe, a year early for design, for looking at things. I'm hearing now that for about $100,000, and they seem to be teetering over there when they say $100,000, getting all that done, I think you split the baby in half and you do $150,000 of the $300,000, and you set that aside for the very thing that our public works department said, plus Karen's motion, and I think that gets us there. I think that's what the money was set aside for. It was set aside a year early so that we can look at things. And before we then invest $3.5 million, we see if that's, I mean, how it works out there. I mean, that's, we knew regardless of where the site was gonna be, that there was gonna have to be some money spent upfront to give us some better answers. So I ask my colleagues to, I agree with our council president, let's stop going around in a circle. I'm ready to vote. I won't call the question, but I'm ready to vote. And I will vote no, and I urge you to vote no, and then put the motion on the floor of additional $150,000. So that's my, those are my comments.
Thank you, Malcolm. On the motion, Ron Kroger. Ron Kroger.
I'm going to make a second substitute motion that the city council authorize up to $120,000 for design. Any additional funds over $120,000 will be paid by Soccer Rapid City. That's my motion.
Would that be for the design plan?
For the design.
Okay, and we're just talking about design plan now, okay? On that motion for $120,000 put towards the design plan, anything over would be the soccer organization. Karen Olson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The question I'd have is, the design plan, does that, are we describing the off-site improvements, or is that design planned exclusively the onsite improvements?
I think it's the improvements that, if I'm correct, Mr. Kroger, that Mr. Ellis had put forth?
Yeah, I think Mr. Ellis put forth, yes.
Would you like to hear those again, Ms. Karen?
I still, I want to make sure. You can do all of those things that Robert is describing as an onsite plan, and I just want to make sure, are we describing planning, that all of the things that you've mentioned, Robert, could be done exclusively onsite? And I just want my colleagues to understand whether we're talking about those as onsite planning, or this includes the off-site improvements.
Robert Ellis, please.
This is onsite and off-site, and I do want to qualify. This isn't a go-to-construction set of plans. This is very preliminary, 35%, 40% design plans, get a good concept of what the scope of the project is and the basic cost estimates.
Did you get that, Ms. Karen?
Yes. With that, I would support the motion on the floor to move us forward. I voted to give 70,000 to the Performing Arts Center, and as you know, nothing has come from that. Well, maybe something came from it. We didn't spend any more money than 70,000. Maybe that's a good thing.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions for either the motion maker or for Robert. Could this money, this $120,000, could it be used for anything that's already been done? Understanding the motion would be no. I mean, it couldn't be used for, to pay for plans that are already been worked on.
Ron Kroger, please. Is that okay?
This would have to go out for bid, would it not?
Jason Green.
This is a professional service, so it doesn't have to be bid.
It does not have to be.
However, the city council has adopted a consultant selection process, and we would have to go through that process to select someone to do this design work through our usual channels.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Ron. Do we have any other questions on the $120,000 for design plan? If not...
Real brief, I'm sorry.
Bill O'Krepke, please.
The, will this, will this money be enough for you to do your design for the soccer, actually, the 26 soccer fields, and how that's gonna go in? Was that gonna be enough for that?
I guess we could ask Robert Ellis, please.
I would, I would think that it would, because really, you're gonna be taking a look at a grading plan.
So it would work, then?
And then draw some lines where soccer fields, yes, I would think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. We do have a motion on the floor. Ron Kroger.
I do have one question for Marsha Elkins.
Marsha, please.
Marsha, you've been really quiet there. Is there anything, is there anything we're missing on your side of the aisle here?
Marsha Elkins.
I think you're on target, in terms of trying to identify the information you need to make a decision. So I think you're on target.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions on this motion? Malcolm Chapman.
Just a clarification. This motion is just about $120,000 and the design that our public works department outlined. This is not an amendment to Karen's talking about the 3.8 and the land as is. This is not that. So am I correct? I just need to clarify.
Is this an amendment, Mr. Kroger?
This is just a substitute motion.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Okay, if we're ready to vote on the $120,000 to be for design plan only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? One no from Sam Quaker and Ron Wyfenbach. Let's go ahead and take a roll call, just in case. Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Haddcock?
Aye.
Lucroy?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Wyfenbach?
No.
O'Krepke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Be an eight to two vote, the motion passes. Any other discussion by counsel? Would be Karen Olson, please.
I would then put my motion on the floor that was previously on the floor, which is, there is 8.3 million dollars from 2012. Excuse me, sorry. It's getting, it's becoming a lot. 3.8. 3.8 million dollars from 2012 and land designated for this project, and that is the extent at this point of the city's, the city's participation. Can I make one comment about this, Madam Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I think my colleagues should all realize that as this project moves forward, certainly tax increment funding could be talked about at any point in the future. I am not proposing that as a part of this motion for very specific reasons. I want it very limited in what the city's participation is. But I think my colleagues should understand that any council in the next five years could do something totally different from what we're doing, and if you've sat here a while, you know that happens occasionally. But that is not what the proposal I'm making.
So are you minusing the $120,000 off that 3.8, if I'm correct? Correct, right? Thank you. So it'd be, what, 3.68? Thank you. And the land. Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with the limitation of the 3.8 million dollars with the 3.68 million dollars as it stands now. However, I'd like to go a step further and say that my interpretation of the motion, if it passes, that the three-point, saying that the three-point dollars, 3.8 million dollars is it, that means that a TIF is taken off the table, because a TIF requires additional taxpayer participation. I want to take the TIF off the table, because I believe that having a nonprofit organization apply for a TIF is a troublesome thing to begin with, plus the way the TIF came forward last year was not upfront. If there is going to be an effort or a desire to apply for a TIF, that needs to be stated tonight, because if this motion passes, my understanding is, is that tax increment financing is absolutely taken off the table. And if the intent of the motion maker is to not take it off the table, then I believe that Soccer Rapid City has an obligation to come forward to the council to state whether they still want to consider tax increment financing, and to make sure that before anything is submitted to any committee, that all the information is laid out and presented. I do not want us to piecemeal a TIF as was attempted last year.
Thank you, Sam. Just a question, without a design plan, how would you know, based on costs and recommendations at this point, whether they needed a TIF or not? I guess that would be my question to Sam, because you don't know how, if it's 16 million and, or it's 5 million or whatever. I guess that was my point on the design plan, to see where that's going, and to put some other thing on the table to ask him that question, I think, would be hard of anybody at this point. But you can answer if that... Sam Quaker.
I'd like to answer Alderman Haddcock's question. The reality is, is...
Madam President, you need to talk to your city attorney.
Sorry. Jason Green, please. Sorry, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I don't mean to cut the discussion off, but this is not the TIF committee. This is not even a city council meeting. This is a committee meeting. Anything that, any decision that goes forward from this committee is only a recommendation. Even if the council were to adopt a resolution saying, "We're not gonna approve a TIF out in this area today", the next meeting, you could change your mind and undo that by simple action of a new resolution. So I don't know that it's possible to forever eliminate the possibility that a TIF could be created in any area in town, anywhere. So I think it's inappropriate to discuss TIF tonight, because it's not on your agenda.
Thank you, and I guess that was my point. It was hard to kind of decide that when we're on a whole different direction. Malcolm Chapman, please.
I support the motion on the floor, because I think it, this is where the conversation started tonight. The council needed to be on record to give some direction to the soccer community in terms of what we thought was appropriate or not appropriate. I'm gonna try to dance around what Jason said, in that sometimes these things are created by the city and by the city council, and if the city council deems that it's necessary to do certain things in a certain area, I think that's appropriate about certain things, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Malcolm. Karen Olson, please. I think you understood what I was describing. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ron Wyfenbach?
I just wanted to clarify one thing. The 3.8 million dollars is limited to, that's it. No, no, no extra for infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. Is that correct? That's what I seconded, so, okay.
Thank you, Ron. Any other discussion? All in favor of the 3.68 plus the land, and that'd be the council's decision for soccer at this point? Malcolm Chapman.
Still think the motion is 3.8. That's the total gift, I mean, that's the total, the 120 and the 300 is just part and parcel of the 3.8. The total is 3.8 million dollars. That's Karen's motion, 3.8 million, not this 3.68, 5, whatever. 3.8 million dollars is the dollar amount through 2012 that's being given to the soccer community. They're just using parcels, part of that to fund this particular study. The money is still 3.8 million.
So is that correct, Jason? Because we made a different motion on the 120, and now we're making a motion on the land plus the rest of the money, if I'm correct?
My understanding was what you were doing with the 120 is authorizing the expenditure of that portion of the amount that's in the 2012 plan, which I believe is 3.8.
Okay.
So as I understand the motion on the floor, it's to acknowledge that land plus the designated amount in 2012 is the extent of the city's contribution for everything, infrastructure and soccer fields.
Thank you, Jason. Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will support this motion. If there's an effort to bring forward a TIF, it will not be met with, with, well, there will be a lot of debate, let's put it that way, if a TIF, if a TIF comes forward. So my understanding of the motion on the floor is, is that this is it, not a penny more. And when I, when I'm, when I'm saying not a penny more, that means not a penny more of property tax dollars either.
Okay.
Well, a TIF is property taxes, so what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna support a TIF. I will support this motion, and my reading of this motion, you can all read it how you want to, my reading of this motion is, is that this means this is it, there will be no TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you on your participation. Robert Ellis, please.
I just need to clarify one thing. If utilities off-site need to be extended and oversized, that oversize could be on top of this 3.8 million dollars with us putting a construction fee on the upstream property, benefiting properties? Is that the intent? Because that would be above and beyond 3.8 million dollars as related to extending infrastructures to the site.
I guess, right now, would we need to know that with the 120 and what we're discussing today, based on getting those plans and then deciding if that oversizing and stuff needs to come forward, Robert? Do we need to know that today?
The oversizing will be hundreds of thousands of dollars. It'll be substantial.
Okay.
And it will, it will be needed for proper development, so...
I guess that was my point of bringing that up before, and how that oversizing can be paid for, and that's what I was trying to bring forth, is through hookup fees and other things. So would that cost be a cost for the soccer group, or could it be like we do for developers?
I would recommend that if they show they need an eight-inch water line, we know we need a 16, that the Water Enterprise Fund put in the oversizing cost and put on the connection fee, and that would be on top of this 3.8 million dollars.
I guess, but that'd be my point. The only thing we're giving them is 3.8. The oversizing would be for the city's portion, and we would get that back, so it wouldn't be, theirs is required for an eight-inch. Ours is required for an oversizing that we would need, because it would be silly not to do the 16 in the 27-inch water and sewer line. I don't see that that, again, should be put on the cost of the soccer people. That is a city cost. So it seems to me, on common sense, that the 3.8, their cost would be the eight-inch lines that they are required to have, and anything we need to put to oversize would be our cost.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear, we're thinking alike.
But that's what I'm saying. Let's see what the council says. Ron Wyfenbach?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll just raise the water rates again to pay for that, so that's no problem. Put that on there.
Ron Kroger. Um, Ron Kroger.
I think Karen's motion specified that it was, uh, 2012 funds, three point eight out of 2012.
Thank you. Anything else on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, we do, we do have a couple people that would like to speak. Um, Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you. And I, I understand that a business plan will be coming forward, Brian, but I, I would like to ask, and I'm, I'm sure the organization, uh, does, uh, financial statements, and I would like to, I don't think a motion is necessary, uh, for this. I would just like to, and I think the rest of the council can be provided a copy as well. I'd like to see a copy of your, your, uh, two thousand and eight, um, financial, uh, financial statement. And, you know, one of the reasons I'm asking is, is earlier tonight, there was a question on how much money you had in the bank, and, uh, no one seemed, no one seemed to know. And, uh, you know, I'd like to have that answer, and I'd also like to know how much was expended in two thousand and eight for, um, organizational administrative costs, et cetera.
Sam, Malcolm has.
Are you willing to release that information?
If I could, Sam. Malcolm has some of that information for you.
Okay.
So.
But when he finishes, I'd like to speak.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Mr. Pitts if he's willing to provide that information.
Um, what I think I'll do is ask Malcolm to answer the questions.
I'd like to ask him. He's the head of the organization. I'd like to ask him the question.
Malcolm, go ahead. Uh, okay, guys.
Because I'm not sure what Malcolm has, and so rather than have a back and forth, I would just like to ask Mr. Pitts while he's here if he's willing to release that information.
I'm more than willing to ask for them to release that information. I don't think that will be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Sam.
It's okay.
Malcolm Chapman, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I, I think this is how we got into a slippery slope from day one with the soccer community, and, and this is the point of this meeting, so that the body can get on record to tell the soccer community what it is that we're, they're, what they can expect from us and what they need from us. If we want all that information, Sam, I think that's appropriate, but I think the body should vote on that. I mean, this is almost at the last hour, at the last minute, then it's, oh, by the way, I want you to give me this and this and this and this and this. The body hasn't asked for that information. If you want that information, I think this is what this meeting was about. Have the body get on record to say to them exactly what it is that we want, what they can expect from us. And I don't have any problem supporting you getting that information or voting affirmatively on that. I don't have a problem at all. But let's keep it all within the confines of the body and not individually me asking what I would want them to do or anyone else for that matter.[1649.83]